All right, and we are live. Okay, here comes the intro. You're listening to the Grow Clinton Podcast. Grow Clinton is a 501(c)(6) nonprofit economic community development and tourism organization based in Clinton, Iowa. For more information, visit growclinton.com. Again, that's growclinton.com. Now, back to the show. What's happening to all you millions of people? Beautiful people out there in podcast land. Thank you so much for tuning into another episode of the Grow Clinton Podcast, hosted and presented by Grow Clinton, a small economic development, community development, and tourism nonprofit organization located on the eastern side of the great state of Iowa, right along the mighty Mississippi. As always, I am your host, Andy Sikolovich, President and CEO of Grow Clinton, joined in the studio by Jenny Home. Jenny, what's happening?
That parade last night.
Yeah, Mardi Gras Parade, also known as the Halloween Parade. Never understood the Mardi Gras side of it.
No one does.
Because Mardi Gras, what is that, March, I think?
That's supposed to be right before Lent.
Yeah, yeah.
Before Ash Wednesday.
But we do it, we do it here.
Alright.
The Mardi Gras Parade on Halloween with Santa Claus at the end. It keeps you on your toes.
I've never seen, in my whole life, that parade so well attended. That thousands of people were there and it was so great. Everything went off so well.
Very cool. And kudos to all of those people who put together floats. And it was, the weather was nice. It wasn't too cold.
A little chilly, but it was okay.
A little chilly, not like it has been in past years.
Oh, my gosh, I've been down there when it's been snowing. Yeah.
All right. You ready for our sponsors, Jenny?
Yes.
Mic check, courtesy of Citizens First Bank, making your finances and our audio crystal clear. These new microphones in the Grow Clinton Studio are proudly sponsored by the bank that's always in tune with your community. Find them at gocfb.bank, banking as it should be, with Citizens First Bank, Member FDIC. AdCraft Printwear and Sully Sports. AdCraft has been in the custom apparel game since 1974. Over the years, they have grown from a small family-run business serving the Clinton, Iowa, community to a cutting-edge operation that serves teams and companies all over the United States. For all of your custom printware needs, visit adcraftusa.com. Again, that's adcraftusa.com. And the Grow Clinton Podcast is powered by Miles Communications High-Speed Fiber Internet. That's right, folks, the wicked fast speeds ensure that our broadcast is crisp, clear, and consistent time after time. Miles offers residential and commercial high-speed internet services as well as television and telephone options to meet your home or company's communication demands. If they're not in your neck of the woods, they are on their way. For more information, milestelephone.com. Again, milestelephone.com. Good show today, Jenny.
Another one of our great community service people who are coming to throw their hat in the ring to do the job.
Today, we are interviewing Mr. Rich Klond. Rich currently sits on the Comanche School Board, and he is running for reelection, which we're very excited to learn more about his plans moving forward if reelected. Rich, welcome to the podcast.
Thank you. Appreciate being here. My podcast debut.
Podcast debut for Rich Klond. I'm sure your dad's been on a few podcasts.
I don't know.
Probably is. He's probably been on a lot of them. You just don't know it. So, vision and leadership is what we're going to focus on first. Rich, what inspired you to run for reelection for the Comanche Community School Board?
Yes, I guess I'll start off with my background. My wife and I are both born and raised in Comanche. Both went to Comanche Schools K through 12. And now all three of our kids are in Comanche Schools. So, the Comanche community and Comanche Schools mean a lot to our family. I think they mean a lot to the town of Comanche, too. You know, I thought, you know, four years ago when I ran for the first time, you know, I thought to myself, you know, this being as important as it is to me, you know, I have my wife and three kids in school all day, every day for, you know, 180 days of the year. I think makes sense for me to put my hat in the ring for, for school board.
Absolutely. So, defining success for the district, what key indicators do you look at, or do you leverage to measure that success within the district?
Well, I mean, success comes in a lot of different forms. And for individual students, success looks different, you know, for each one. Because you have, there's so many different paths out there you can go these days. So, we want to give our kids kind of a roadmap for what that success is going to look like for them, whether that be college, trade school. It could be entrepreneurship. It could be military service. Could be entering the workforce directly out of high school. We want to give our kids a roadmap for whatever path they want to take. This is what it looks like to succeed on that path.
What are the biggest changes that you've noticed? It's kind of a big span of time, but from the time you were in school to now, where you are in the school.
Trying to say he's old, Jenny. He said it's a big span of time.
It's a huge, long span of time. You can get your arms around it.
Yeah, I think one of the big things, I look back to when I was in high school and looking towards graduation, there was a big push for everybody to go to college. And, you know, community college and trade schools weren't looked at quite as favorably maybe as they are today, which I think is a good thing, that now we kind of look at those things differently.
Oh, yeah.
If you go into the trades, you can be very successful in life. So, college is not the path for, for everyone.
Right.
But I think that's been a nice shift, I think, to see happen.
Right. Exactly. We talked yesterday about how AI is playing a role now in education and how AI cannot take the place of somebody who's got to have a trade. So, what are your feelings about AI in the school?
Yeah, I mean, so at our last board meeting, I actually brought up one of the things I'd like to see going forward is more information brought to the board about AI.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, it's one of those things that's not going anywhere. It's only going to become more prevalent in our lives. So, I want to know, you know, from our administration, how is that affecting staff from a positive and negative standpoint? How is it affecting students from both a positive and negative standpoint? Because there's pros and cons to it. We want that to be used as a tool, but we don't want that tool to hinder their education.
And you have that experience in your background with banking. I mean, that's AI every day, probably.
There's certainly tools out there.
I did notice it doesn't just automatically put money in my account.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, I've chat GPT and requested that they do that, but it.
Somehow money's coming out.
Yeah, always coming out, never going in. Awesome. Yeah, AI is going to be a big modifying thing in education. I mean, really, I think some of the most impacted industries is going to be education.
Yes.
Just because of lack of necessary research and citations and things of all that. And I mean, ChatGPT will cite your paper for you.
That's crazy.
So, yeah, look out, folks. Good luck trying to catch them using it. But I embrace it. I love it. I encourage my children to use it. We encourage everybody here at Grow Clinton to leverage it. It is a tool, much like spell check back in the day. We'll adopt and adopt it and learn to overcome any kind of challenges it presents itself.
Yeah, I think it's important for kids, too, to know that not everything you get out of AI is correct either.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, somebody had a conference I was at was trying to create a word cloud, and that's just like a shape or form, and it's made up of words. And usually it signifies the words that are most prevalent when describing a program, an organization, a business, and, and she did it for her organization. Well, some of the words were not in the English language, and others didn't exist at all. So, you got to be careful. And she just threw it up in the screen. She didn't really even look at it.
Busted, yeah.
And then I was like, ooh, that was generated by AI.
Oh, dear.
All right. So, in the community of Comanche, Rich, what strategies would you recommend to ensure that the district, specifically the school district, initiatives support broader community development goals? So, if I can rephrase that, a school district is a large component of economic development throughout any municipality. How do you envision the school district partnering with the city of Comanche to create a more dynamic community to live in?
Yeah, a lot of people don't think of marketing when they think of school districts, but I think marketing is a big thing. In our board over the last four years since I've been on, that's one thing that we've, we've really pushed. We want to get things out there on social media, what our district is doing well. There are a lot of things that we're doing well. We want to promote those things and keep doing those things well. I think that will help with our enrollment. And it's one of those things that snowballs. When your enrollment grows, you know, that gives more opportunities for, for development that you're talking about. So, that's been one, one push. And, yep, we don't have in our budget right now to hire a full-time marketing person. But I think our administration's been doing a nice job of that and our, our staff when they can.
One of the big secrets to our success here at Grow Clinton, what is it, Jenny? What do I always say going up and down the halls? Press release.
Yes.
No matter what we do, we do a press release. And I am a firm believer, especially in today's world, traditional media, you know, radio and print are always looking for some kind of content, right? They're on a very strict schedule. So, anything we do here at Grow Clinton, some people inside of Grow Clinton may not think it's newsworthy, but you never know what the outside and the readership thinks. So, press release, press release, press release. We do press releases every time somebody comes back from a conference. It just, it's, it's a cool little addition to our marketing efforts, and it always gets picked up.
So, what do you, how do you feel, Rich, about, we've talked about this with some other candidates, about the collaboration between all of the schools. I know in the past it had been kind of a lot of segregation amongst the schools, and they didn't really work together. But how do you feel about the fact that they're now starting to reach across the Viaduct and the river and the, you know?
Yeah, I think there's been a shift in mindset. I think it's been mentioned before that, you know, a lot of the districts around us all have new superintendents. And I do feel like there's, there's more collaboration with those new superintendents than maybe there had been in years past. One example is, you know, when we were going through our budget issues last year, we're doing some sharing now with some transportation stuff with, with Clinton schools. And I think both schools have, school districts have benefited from that.
I think it was cool that you guys helped Clinton High out with their drama department.
Yeah.
Last year, yeah.
So, my, my daughter was actually in that, that school play. Yeah, I think there was initially from the students, there was some concern, you know, we have two schools coming together, you know, what school's going to get the best roles in the play? And by the end of it, you know, all the kids had made so many new friends. And it was a fantastic joint venture there because Clinton High's theater wasn't quite done and Comanche's was, because Comanche just got a new theater as well. See, but by the end of it, it was a fantastic thing, and they got to perform at the, the State Thespian Festival, which my wife and I went to, and you had kids from all over the state in the crowd, and they got to, they got to perform there, their play, and they got a standing ovation at the end. So, it was fantastic.
That's a, that's a.
I was always the one that painted the props.
That's so important, though. But that's so important.
Well, I only did it because it got me out of class.
And there are girls there.
Well, yeah, my, my best friend, female type, she was always involved in that stuff. And I would always be like, throw me on stage crew.
Yep.
And she would just get me out of class while they were rehearsing, and I would be back there painting castles or whatever the heck it was.
It all goes together.
You strike me more as an onstage performer.
I know. No, I was not. I wish I kind of would have, you know, now reflecting back. I, there was a lot of opportunities that I didn't take advantage of just because.
Me, too.
You know, I, I like to work and make money. So, I had a lot of hustles going on at the time. But so, one thing we discussed with every candidate, whether it be Clinton School Board or Comanche, was really the district's ability to attract and retain high-quality educators, especially given the competition with the nearby districts and private employers. What is your strategy? And what would you suggest to the rest of the board to make sure you can secure, A, retain those awesome educators you already have, but B, attract new ones, too, to the district?
Yeah, I think, first off, that's at the state level. That was last year, the year before, they increased the minimum salary for, for teachers. So, if you're a starting teacher, it's $50,000. If you have 12 or more years of experience, the minimum salary is $62,000. So, that certainly bumped up some of the teachers in our districts and districts around the state. So, I think that was definitely a good start as far as keeping teachers in state. Now, as far as bringing it down to the Comanche level, I think a lot of it just comes down to culture. And we hired a new superintendent, obviously somewhat recently. He's a year plus in now. But he's done a great job of transparency and communication. Those are two words that you'll hear a lot probably with him. The communication to us as a board has been excellent. I feel, you know, more informed on what's going on. And insofar as transparency, when we're going through budget issues last year, the entire staff knew what was going on. So, that, that, that culture is, is a, is a big thing in retaining that staff.
Now, education finance is somewhat of a
Oh, my gosh.
difficult algorithm, if you will. I mean, it's not simply cut and dry. The budget does not mimic those in municipal side or even your home finances. It is very complicated. And I'll just leave it at that because I am not an expert. But Rich, how would you and the rest of the board work to ensure that transparency not only exists among the staff, but also throughout the constituency in Comanche?
Yeah, so I would encourage more people to attend school board meetings. I would like to see, you know, more people from the general public, more parents come out to school board meetings. You can watch online if you want to. I think that would be great to get more attendance there to just kind of see what's going on. But again, when we were going through budget issues last year, for months at a time, it was, it was fully transparent with the staff and community if, you know, they wanted to, to pay attention to that. We weren't hiding anything along the way. So.
Yeah. Then you guys had quite a challenge that you faced. Was it 1.6 billion or something like that?
We cut about 1.2 million out of the budget, which was.
With the elimination of only one position, correct?
So, so one, one person who wanted, wanted a job, who couldn't have a job. But there were, there were other positions that were, you know, through people moving around that may have been eliminated, but no, no more people than that.
Very cool.
Yeah, it was challenging, but.
And no elimination of programming?
Correct. And that, that, that's a huge part. You know, all of our kids have the same opportunities they had before. So, we're very proud of that.
Let's see. One of the things that we work on very closely and aggressively here in Clinton or at Grow Clinton is really helping to support entrepreneurship, growing future businesses within our community. So, Grow Clinton is a nonprofit organization that depends 100% on member investment to generate revenue to support our mission and our, our scope of work. So, in order to do that, we have to ensure that businesses are being created in the future so we can bring them in as members. So, how can Comanche Schools better support entrepreneurship, creativity, and overall just leadership development among the students?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great thing to, to ask because we want people to build those small businesses and stay in our community. You know, one thing that we're doing coming up here in January, you probably heard of it, J-terms, what we're calling it.
Heard of it, yes.
So, we're giving students the opportunity to, for one week, first week after Christmas break, they'll go out, internship, job shadow, figure out, you know, they might think they know what they want to do, but when they experience that in the real world, either that will confirm that, or maybe they'll say, eh, that's, that's not, not quite for me. And some of those opportunities will be with business owners who have that firsthand experience of building their own business. And hopefully, you know, if that's something they want, they want to do, they can learn from them. Okay, how do you go about building a business? Because it's not always easy.
Yeah, it is interesting. I mean, we're with a lot of students. Clinton School District has this synergy program. A lot of those young professionals are focused on entrepreneurial development. They want to own their own business at some point. And I really do believe you have to kind of foster that flame early so that when they do graduate, whether it's high school, or they go off to post-secondary, whatever they do, they understand what it takes to actually own a business. Because a lot of them just have these weird thoughts that you can chill and just money ends up in your account and it's, you know, forget it.
Be a star on YouTube.
Yeah, be a big YouTube star and.
So, what's the follow-up for the J-term? I mean, after they do that, what's the follow-up after that? They just, they take classes that go in that direction? Or how does that, what does that mentorship?
Well, I mean, there are classes at the school during that week. Because I know some students aren't doing a full week. Maybe they'll do a couple of days.
Oh, okay.
At a job shadow. And then they'll come to the school, and maybe they'll, there's kind of courses going on that might fall in line with that. Or maybe it's something different that they didn't experience in the workforce, and they come back to the school and learn about another job that they might be interested in.
Yeah.
But it just gives, gives them the opportunity to explore the options that are out there. Because there's a lot of different options, different paths they can go.
Have you had a good response from businesses and industries around the area in taking the students in?
Yeah, I think so. Our principal for the high school, Josh Davis, he was just at Rotary this week, yesterday, and he talked to Rotarians about it. And there's some business owners there that
Oh, cool.
can certainly help out. So, just trying to get the word out like that. And I think the response has been positive from businesses locally here. But we have actually students going out of state to do things, too. But Josh, Josh Davis was telling me that we have one student, I think, working at a ski resort in Colorado, I think, for a week.
Are you kidding me?
Where was that?
Oh, I want to do that. Wow.
Deuces, I'm out.
I want to do that now.
Yeah, very cool. One thing you mentioned is about, we talked about transparency regarding the budget. But understanding, understanding that it's not just the school board making all the decisions, they serve kind of as, provide the governance and oversight and have fiduciary responsibility as the Board of Directors overseeing the school. But how would you engage parents, teachers, and just the rest of the community stakeholders in overall district planning and decision-making? Because everybody's got a fresh idea. I'm sure they want to share with you.
Yeah, so we do have a CIAC Committee, School Improvement Advisory Committee, I believe is what it stands for. So, that's made up of some board members. It's made up of administration, staff members, and also parents in the community. So, we want, we want that feedback from parents. If there's parents or community members out there that want to get in touch with school board members, our, our email addresses are on, on the school website. I'm always open to, to getting that feedback from, whether, whether it be, sometimes it's students, sometimes it's staff, sometimes it's community members, parents. I'm, I'm open to any, any feedback I can get.
Yeah, excellent. I love that. Yeah, we, we thrive on feedback here at Grow Clinton. I am constantly soliciting not only from our members, but also from our Board of Directors, all of our committees, staff. Like, the more information we get in the form of feedback, the better we can be in our programming almost immediately and in the future.
And hats off to the people who are putting themselves up for this. I mean, you've already been on the school board, running for reelection, and then all the people who are, you know, potentially going to be on the school board, you don't get paid to do that, and you do get a lot of feedback. And the fact that you're willing to do that and take it in a positive way to make things better for the students is great.
Yeah. You know, when you're on a school board and you have constituents and parents alike, there's always that kind of dynamic where some people are very, want to invest more on academics.
Right.
Some are leaning towards athletics and extracurriculars. Some then want better facilities. So, as a school board member, what is your philosophy on balancing the investments between academics, facilities for the district, and the extracurriculars like athletics?
Yeah, I think Comanche has done a good job of that. I'll, I'll first say in Comanche, we get a lot of support from the community. I think in a small town like ours, and there's a lot across the state, a lot of the community's identity is tied to the school district. And our community's always been very supportive, whether it's a, you know, bond referendum to improve our facilities, the voted pebble that passed last year, that, or this past year. Great support from the community. So, and then, you know, last, last bond referendum, we did add a, a gym, but we also added on to our theater. So, we're not just focusing on sports, we're also looking at the arts. So, I think we've done a good job kind of spreading out those priorities.
Yeah. Can you explain for our listeners, you just dropped an acronym, P E P L, physical plant and equipment levy. What exactly does that mean?
So, that's money that is used for things like buying new buses, which unfortunately we have to do from time to time.
Expensive.
We want to make sure our kids are safe traveling from, from this town to that town. It could be new roofs on buildings. Could be computers, laptops. So, anything.
But how does that impact the taxpayer?
So, I mean, they vote to allow, allow the district to get a little more money for, for those things. So, we can maintain what we have, which is important because if let those things fall apart, then you have a whole, whole other problem. Another thing on the last voted pebble that we did, it allows us to use an income surtax, which Comanche is one of the few schools, and maybe the only in the county, that did not have an income surtax. And just to kind of expand on that, so when you compare property tax levies of the different communities, you're not really comparing apples to apples because Comanche doesn't have or hasn't had in the past an income surtax. So, all of ours is on the property tax, where other school districts do have an income surtax. And what the income surtax means is that, let's say you have a $4,000 tax liability in the state of Iowa, and we have a 5% income surtax, that 5% is applied to your state tax liability, not your total income. So, if you have $4,000, you have to pay in Iowa state taxes, that 5% would be applied to that $4,000. And one of the nice things that does, it'll be a tool that we could use in the future, not to increase taxes on people, but to lessen maybe the property taxes if we can, and shift more, more of that to an income surtax. And senior citizens that live in our community, that helps them out. Because if they're staying in their home, their property taxes are going up, we could maybe shift some of that burden to the income surtax. And, you know, they may not have the income coming in where they're taxed on that. So, that alleviates some pain from our senior citizens a little bit.
Especially if it's retirement, because that is no longer taxed in the state of Iowa. Yeah, a lot of things, I was involved in a P E P L discussion back 10 years ago, when I was in, I was the Chair of the Clinton Community School District Education Foundation, which no longer exists when I got off. I didn't do anything. I didn't mess it up. It was just organically dissolved. But, yeah. But no, the P E P L thing, I mean, a lot of people will complain and say, oh, it's a tax increase. And, and really, in the long term, if you think about it, it is not. You are paying that physical plant and equipment levy to ensure that schools can maintain their infrastructure and the quality of their existing buildings, meaning that if they are well-maintained, preventative maintenance, they'll last a heck of a lot longer than having to pass another bond referendum to rebuild something from scratch, which is more expensive than maintaining what you already have. You know, Northeast is going through a pretty considerable bond referendum this election on November 4th, Election Day, 13.5 million.
13.5?
Yeah. But they have stuff that's been, you know, built in the 60s, and their electric system needs to be brought up to speed and everything. So, a lot of stuff to consider. But when somebody throws out the P E P L, or they throw out a tax levy increase, it's not necessarily a bad thing if you think about it in longevity of the quality of the structure.
Rich, what would you say to people who are voting for this to get them on board, to vote for something like that for the school system? What would be your pitch to get them to say yes to it?
So, that, that passed just this past year. And I, I want to thank our community for the overwhelming support on that because it, it passed with flying colors.
Oh, good.
And again, I'll go back to Comanche has always been very supportive. And I think, you know, we try to get the word out as much as possible, what that was, what that was used for. And I think people understand that we have to maintain our buildings. We have to maintain our technology. We have to, you know, maintain our buses, buy new buses at times.
Because the marketing kind of plays into that is kind of my point, the marketing to bringing new families to the area. And so that, you know, speaking of Northeast, if they're listening, this is what you want to hear is success and how that plays into the marketing of your school.
Yeah. Yep, you got to have a quality education. You have to have a quality buildings. You have to have it all. I mean, that's what people look for. How many times Jenny and I engage individuals, professionals who are moving to the area, maybe they're taking over as a plant lead, as a manager or site manager, and they've received maybe four to six months of notice that they're relocating?
Right.
The first thing they always look at, if they have children of school age, is the schools.
Right.
The house, the area they're going to live in, that's, that's second and third. The schools is always number one.
Right.
So, very, very important. So, Rich, as we close up today's interview, why, on November 4th, when somebody gets that ballot, should they check off your name for school boarding in Comanche?
Yeah, I mean, we went through my, my motivation are the, the kids. I mean, we're all in it for the kids. We want those kids to graduate from Comanche Schools and have the tools they need to succeed for the rest of their lives, or at least the foundation to build on that. Yeah, again, my wife and I were born and raised here. That Comanche Schools mean a lot to us, means a lot to the community. So, and we don't really know, you know, two years from now, three years from now, what the school district might be faced with. So, I hope that I've proven during my time so far on the school board that I can be trusted to make good decisions. Because that's, in the end, that, that's what it's about. I mean, people's judgment on, on the school board, you want to be able to trust people and their judgment, making decisions. So, I respectfully ask for people's vote to honor before November 4th.
All right. There you go, folks.
All right.
Rich Klond, candidate for school board, Command Storm.
The Storm.
Go Storm.
Go Storm. Jenny, what do you got going on the rest of the week?
Oh, gosh, we got more podcasts, of course.
Got another one today.
Yes, but that isn't a candidate.
No, this is, we're.
Park Vista.
Park Vista's coming in from Comanche.
From Comanche.
And talked to us a little about what they have going on there. And, yeah, we got a couple more candidates coming up before Election Day.
We do.
Trying to squeeze as many in as we can. And again, we, we contacted all of them.
All of them.
To see if they wanted to be on the show. So, those who agreed will be on. Those who we did not hear from will not be on.
Right.
That's, that's easy as it gets.
Yep. We had a really great response to this, and we did contact everybody. Yep. We had a really great response to this and we did contact everybody at the information that we were given to contact them and. Um, I'm really pleased with how many people responded and who, how many people wanted to do this. I'm really happy about that because. I've gotten a lot of really great feedback from people about learning people, who they are, their faces, their names, the whole thing.
Speaking of upcoming shows tomorrow.
Yes.
Nine thirty AM. We have the pleasure of interviewing the one, the only Debbie Durham, who, if the name sounds familiar, is the director of the Iowa. Economic Development Authority as well as the Iowa Finance Authority.
Yep.
Uh, she has worked with me and she's been a great mentor for the last ten years of my professional career. I am very sad to see her go, but she is governor-appointed and with Governor Reynolds not seeking reelection. Uh, she is going to be calling it quits and retiring, well deserved. I think her last day is like January twenty seventh or something like that.
I'm so excited to just talk to her and, you know, about her, her experience and everything that she's seen.
Yeah, she is definitely not a wallflower. She has a very outgoing personality. Well spoken and she's experienced it all. And for those that don't know, she was in Sioux City, I believe, as an economic development practitioner. Um, running their Chamber of Commerce and in E D O Economic Development Office. So that's going to be. Really cool to be able to have her in the studio and learn about what she's going to do in the next couple of months. No doubt, knowing her for the last decade, she's going to go out with a bang. So we're going to have some requests that we're going to make of her. And try to get those pushed through to the finish line before she calls it quits and retires. More shows coming up and then we have, let's see, oh, Thursday night. We have a candidate forum.
That's right.
At the city of Clinton, City Hall. I believe it starts at six. We'll be doing, uh, interviews and candidate forum with the school board candidates. Following that, we will have a short statement from Connor Lee, who is running unopposed in Ward one for City Council.
Good.
We have a contested seat in Ward three. Uh, two individuals will be on the ballot for that ward and then we will have five candidates. Uh, competing for two available at large council seats.
I'd love to see how many people are interested and involved.
Yeah, it'll stream via YouTube for those that do not. Uh, already subscribed to the Clinton or City of Clinton, Iowa YouTube page. It'll be available there as well.
Can you get the link from our website?
Uh, no, I mean, it's not going through our YouTube stuff. So it's the City of Clinton, but.
Okay.
I'll drop it in our socia's and we'll promote the event, um, so you'll be able to find it. And then again, they record everything. So there'll be a replay available, but.
Nice.
Very interesting election coming up in the City of Clinton and Comanche, but. City of Clinton, come January, it's going to be a lot of new faces behind that. City council table.
Super interesting.
Yeah, good opportunities.
Yep.
Change is never a bad thing.
Mm hmm.
All right, everybody. Thank you so much for listening to episode one seventy-two of the Grow Clinton Podcast, recorded on this twenty-eighth day of October. Twenty twenty-five. Get out there and enjoy the beautiful fall weather.
Oh, man.
Because something tells me we're going to go direct like summer, a little bit of fall and then boom.
And I hate to say it, but this is the. Turn, turn back your clocks weekend. I'm not crazy.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, fall back, right?
Right, fall back. But everything's great and.
Everything's great, everything's great.
And the sound of it.
So, okay, everything's good. All right, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your week. Stay safe, stay classy. We'll talk to you soon. See ya. Thank you for listening to the Grow Clinton Podcast. Be sure to subscribe and follow us on all your socia's. Until next time, see ya.